And our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Thanks, Brian. Do I hear a second? You, Melissa, you got a second? Any discussion? Yeah, Jeff?
Go ahead, Ernie.
I think you're on mute, Ernie.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, I'd ask to have a copy of a email I sent around regarding when I had sent a response to something that the chair had sent to me. And which was a violation of our, I'm not quite sure, somebody told me it might not be a violation because only the committee can violate. I'm not quite clear on how that works, but the point is that I sent a copy of, I sent that and I asked that that copy would be a copy of that be included in tonight's discussion of the open meeting law as a matter of record. And and I was told that it was going to be included by our zoning administrator. It was going to be included and I didn't see it.
I see it. It's, I can see it right here. I have it in front of me. It's on the, it's in the packet that's posted.
Which day was it posted? Because the day, I was just looking for it before the meeting. What time or day?
It was posted this morning and the link that I just pulled up, it has it there.
What time, what time was that?
Sometime this morning. I don't know exactly. If you click on it now, it should have that.
Well, I'm not seeing it. That's the point. It's, I'm not, is it under your name?
Where are you looking, Ernie?
In my inbox.
Ernie, it's been, it's, as a document, it was attached to the packet. So if you.
Yeah, I'm looking for the packet. I'm looking for today's packet.
Yeah, but you didn't, you didn't get, you didn't. Did you get?
The, it wasn't, it wasn't sent as an email. The updated packet is on the webpage for the planning.
Oh, okay. I didn't, so there was no notice of it. It's sent to us by email. Okay.
Jeff, you had something?
Yeah, I do, among other things. I can't support this agenda. We talked about open meeting law. And there's this item eight that talks about open meeting law refresh. The planning commission hasn't adhered to open meeting law for years. I don't know why. There's no refresh. We've rejected the law. So let's talk about the open meeting law. So I, I mean, there are other elements of this that, you know.
Jeff, it's on the agenda. Jeff, sorry. It's, it's, no, Jeff.
Please don't interrupt me, Mark. It's item eight. It says refresh. It says refresh. It says refresh.
Yeah, so it's on there.
It, well, it says.
I hear you, buddy. I hear you.
We've never, we've never done the open meeting law for real.
Well, I've only been here for three months. I want to talk about it too, but it is on there. And I'm looking forward to talking about it because we need to.
So, but so can I change, if anything, can we talk about actually engaging in the open meeting law as opposed to this word refresh, which is false?
Okay. Any other comments on the agenda?
No, no, hold on, Jackie.
But I heard you. You, you, you made your comment.
Are we going to change the agenda or not? It's not a refresh. We've never actually done the open meeting law. So can we actually talk about just open meeting law discussion or something like that?
Brian, you have a comment?
I made the motion to approve the agenda. I see no reason to change my motion.
Okay, Melissa, you're in concurrence. Okay, all right. All right, let's call it a question. All in favor of the agenda? Raise your hand. Okay, I see four hands. I've got Brian, Mark, Melissa, and Jackie all opposed. Jeff and Ernie, okay.
So sorry, Jackie. Per, per the procedures for remote meetings, you're going to have to do a roll call on the vote.
Sure, Brian.
Yes to the agenda for me, Jackie.
Thank you, Ernie.
Hey.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes.
Okay, Jeff?
I have no idea what Rod said.
Yeah, we're just doing a roll call for the vote on the agenda.
I have no idea what Rod said.
Do you vote yes or no on the agenda?
I voted no.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Okay. Oh, let's move on. We have our next item is public comment. So I see one member of the public. Linda, do you have any other comment or any comment, I should say? Okay, you just went on mute, so I assume that's a no. Uh, any, I don't see anybody else. If I'm missing anyone, let me know. And if not, we'll go on.
Jackie, I just raised my hand.
Yes, Jeff?
As a citizen, I hope we can move beyond the toxic so-called leadership of our planning commission and select board in consideration of our town and community. A key element is we need to address the chair's role and hold you, Jackie, accountable for the divisive and toxic running commentary after people speak. This needs to stop. That's not what the chair's role is, nor does it comport with the law. Additionally, deference to staff needs to stop since staff is conflicted and does not have knowledge in the context of advising with respect to legal issues we're addressing. I offer this as a citizen, a 60-year citizen in our community.
Okay. Any other comment? Yeah. Rod, you had a comment?
Can I just get clarification? Was that, was that comment from Jeff as a member of the public or as a member of the planning commission?
That was a member of the public.
Okay. If he could, if he could provide the text, that would be helpful for the minutes.
Okay. Why don't we move on? And we're on the density study update. Aaron, you want to tell us where to go with that?
I will be speaking to that as I have not been involved in it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the follow-up is that I met with the consultants last week to prepare final maps and to do an analysis. After some more detailed look, you know, more detailed examination of the development patents over the last 20 years. I think that the study is going to boil down to making a couple of recommendations. One would be to contemplate the creation of an additional zoning district. Sort of a midpoint between the village zoning districts and rural residential in a roughly three-mile buffer around the edge of the existing village area. And have some consideration about how small a minimum parcel size could be so that you could accommodate a well and a septic system and a house in the driveway and the other necessary features for development. And probably call that rural residential. And then beyond that, describe another zoning district, which is currently labeled rural residential, call that, call that rural and make the minimum parcel size approximately 20 acres, which is the, about the, the, the the mean of the current parcels that are created in that district in the, in the first instance. And when you run the density factor calculator, you, and you know, you, you, you generally end up the smallest parcel that you, that we generally are creating is in the range of 20 acres. So it's not that dissimilar to the way the formula works right now. It would allow you to give more certainty to the applicants. A different way of approaching it is to just continue with the distance from Tracy Hall as a measurement and drop out the natural resource variables because you could, those, those variables for the most part are already contained in subdivision regulations and you could reinforce those in the subdivision regulations and/or those regulations prevail at the level of the state. Including, we would expect in the future, if the town concludes that they want to be consistent with Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission land use policy, it would recognize the forest blocks and the new zoning and subdivision regulations would need to recognize the policies contained in the Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission plan currently, which propose, and they propose to limit the length of driveways on parcels in forest blocks and other measures such that the disturbance of the forest block is minimized. If you were to look at a map of Norwich currently, about 97% of it is rural residential. And then of that rural residential district, a very significant percentage upwards of about 85%, I believe, is actually mapped by the state is, is already in forest, in a forest block. So in other words, you can achieve, you could achieve similar outcomes to the regulations as they currently read by simplifying them. So we're working on that language right now. We're, you know, the report right now to work through those suggestions and it's hoped that barring complex and staffing shortages on both sides of the equation, both at the consultant's office and at our office, we can conclude that work and have a presentation for the next meeting. But I would say I'm happy to just very loosely discuss those findings, those very draft and preliminary findings now. But I think that that that's looking like one, you know, there's some options there. And so just, you know, want to put it out there and hopefully we'll, we'll get something to you very soon. I see a bunch of hands. I'm assuming they're all in response to this, but I don't know which order they came in because I was actually concentrating on what I was saying.
Jackie's muted.
Jackie, you, Jackie, you're muted.
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't know which hand was up first.
So I think, I think Ernie and then Jeff and then.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ernie.
Okay, are we going to be allowed to actually have substantive input into this process? Because what I see is what I've been seeing, which is experts hand us prepackaged decisions and we debate whether we agree with those decisions or not. But we don't really have a whole lot of input into the rest of the process. I'd like to see this study before any recommendations are made. I'd like to see its methods. I'd like to see, you know, all its objective material and so on and so forth before anything is presented to the, to the board. Because I would like, I, I am positive, I will have something to suggest as well. And I don't want to be put in a position, as I usually am, of having to argue against so-called experts. I want my stuff, I want, not just me, I think anyone. I think this should be available to everybody. And anyone who wants to comment and have it put in, have it stuff considered should have it considered on an equal basis to the so-called experts. And I, 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 I'm going to insist that that's, that's what happens.
Okay. Yeah. I think that's all doable, Ernie. Yeah, I don't see any issue with that. Jeff, go ahead.
I just wanted to say one, I just want to make sure it's clear. This has to, what any of us have as input has to have equal weight to what the experts recommend. And it has to be in the same document, has to be all at the same time. So it's all considered equally. Not because, I don't want it separated between the experts and us so-called non-experts because we're not non-experts. Some of us have lived here many, many years longer than maybe these experts have lived in the state even.
I don't know quite what that means, but Rod, you had a comment. You had your hand up, but we also have to hear from Jeff.
Yeah, in full disclosure.
I'm, I'm next, Rod. You're not next.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, Rod. I'll defer to the chair. Let me defer to the chair.
Just a point of clarification. I understand that I was recognized by the chair and I was, and I raised my hand in response to what Ernie said.
Unbelievable.
Thank you.
I would, I would seek to make a clar, I'd seek to make a clarification in regard to what.
You may do that in proper order.
Jeff, Jeff, could we, could we just calm down a little bit? Could you just calm down? It's very difficult.
Robert's.
Very difficult. It's very difficult.
It, it is because you make it so. Robert's rules.
Jeff, Jeff.
Jackie, Jackie.
It's really, I haven't called for Jeff. It's really, there's, I, I think you've lost the point of the argument. What are you trying to achieve?
I'm not, I, I haven't even had a chance to comment. I'm not making an argument yet. So I'm getting interrupted by someone who's out of order because our chair is allowing it yet again.
I think we're trying to, what I would like to do is respond to Ernie's question slash suggestion. That's what we're doing here. Okay? Let's do that. And then we'll move on to you, Jeff.
If I have stuff that relates to what Ernie has to say, maybe you can get back to staff. Remember my comment as a member of the public relative to staff? I don't understand how.
No need for this tone, Jeff. We're all.
I don't have a tone. I'm just trying to be engaged in accordance with Robert's rules, Brian. You can characterize it however you like.
You're putting that above human relationships. You're really poisoning this conversation, Jeff.
No, you are, Brian. Robert's rules of order. Talk about how we conduct ourselves. We get along. We've done this for all but the last five years, for all of the 30-plus years before that, in my existence on this commission.
Okay, if you're only one vote, as you say you always are, Jeff, then you need to work at persuading people. And part of that is
Brian.
With a spirit that acknowledges our humanity and acknowledges that we're serving.
I do. I am a citizen of Norwich for 60 years.
Okay, 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 okay. We've heard it. We've heard it. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Rod now to respond to Ernie's questions last suggestion and then.
Jackie, just, just, just in the interest of, of moving on, I'm, I, I'm going to cede the, cede the floor to Jeff and his particular interpretation of Robert's rules. And let's just get it over with.
Jeff, go ahead. Let's, you had a point.
Yeah, I was going to largely agree with Ernie. We haven't seen anything. I didn't hear anything meaningful from Rod. So when there's something meaningful to present, let's give us time to review it and deliberate about it and discuss it as a planning commission and then provide feedback because we haven't seen any of it yet.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. And I appreciate you giving a bit more just detail and description, Rod, of the progress and the likely direction of the consultant's work. You know, as a consultant myself, I wouldn't put out a report. You know, even for a client with recommendations I disagreed with. I'm having it, I'm, I'm finding it hard to, to understand exactly the process Ernie is recommending. The consultant isn't being asked to write a new density factor or a new zoning rules. They're giving their opinion based on the study they did. And then it's our job to translate that into the town's rule. And, and so, you know, we have ample opportunity during that process to take the evidence and recommendations made by the experts into consideration and balance it against our own lived experience and expertise. I don't think there's any reason to dismiss the work of the firm at this point. But I will say to the substance of what Rod reported on is that the one good thing about the density factor now, even though it's not working, is, is that there are some nuance and appreciation for not just distance from Tracy Hall for true settlement patterns of the town. And that if we go down the route that, that Ernie is describing, which is that we would want to give feedback, of course, we'll do that. And we'd want to build on the recommendations made by the expert. It's, it's to ensure that there's nuance in whatever zoning districts and rules come out of this in that maybe recognizing settlement patterns and many village areas throughout town is a better way than just distance for village, from, from the village center to define a secondary or a tertiary residential district. That's my point. And maybe we'll get to that once we finally see the recommendations. So thank you, Rod.
Thanks, Brian. Okay. Ernie, you had, wanted to respond? I think you're on mute.
I appreciate the fact that Brian understands that, that this is, that this is important, that he understands that the, what I call the black box, the density calculation is important. And, and, and one reason I consider it important is because it helps avoid what was common in the 90s in particular, what they call the sagebrush rebellion approach to zoning, which was zoning was always treated as an attempt to take people's land. The zoning, the, the, the density calculation completely obliterates that argument so that when a town chooses a zoning, chooses a, a planning arrangement, that it's, it's, it's based on things that already existed on the ground before humanity even existed. You know, and so on. This, so it's, it's very difficult for anyone to claim that the town is trying to take someone's land or control their land. Instead, it becomes the town is just trying to make sure that, for instance, wetlands that are, are are protected anyways, simply remain protected. You know, distances, you know, we're trying to control, get, get, get people to stop driving so much climate control, climate change issues and so on and so forth are just simply the economics of wasting gasoline, driving forever to get to just a town to get a bottle of milk and stuff. Those sorts of considerations are represented in the current approach to zoning, kind of approach to planning. That it doesn't work means that maybe the, the, the thing needs to be calculated, recalibrated rather than just thrown out completely. Now, that all, that's an argument for later on. I might change my mind if I see this study and, and so on. But I want to see before there's any suggestions, anything substantive put out, any formulations, anything you want to call it, put out by the experts that we've hired. I want my suggestions and, and anyone else's that's on this committee, maybe any, any citizens in this town who may have, who, who see that, see just the results of the study without the suggestions, without recommendations. Because time and again, for the past, I don't know how many years, has been going on in this town as the power of the individual to influence what's going on in this town has been diminished because of our reliance on experts that we hire. It's time to stop that. There's, there's, the deliberations that we have are over what the experts tell us we can deliberate. Not it, that Jackie, this is my observation. And I've been living in this town. I'm the second longest person living in this town that's on this commission. You know, we talk about experts. Well, living in a town, you know, provides a certain level of expertise too. You know, I mean, I think I know how the town works pretty well. And all of that, all those basics, you know, which, you know, Jeff correct, I mean, a Brian Jack correctly was talking about dealing with things as people. Well, that means things like living in the town matter as well. Not just, do you have a degree in planning? Because I can point out to you the fact that about 30 years ago, our town planner did not have a degree in planning. He didn't do a bad job at all. Okay. And interestingly enough, he recommended to the town that I be given the job when he quit and moved over to Hitchcock, where he remains as, as basically a planner for the, his hospital. So you know, this, this, this fascination with degrees and expertise and stuff like that in this region, it's not just Norwich. It is, is costing. And it's ruining the, the society in the, where we live here. So it's gotta stop. So that's why I'm, at least for myself, the, the rest of the commission can do or say how they, whether they agree with me or not. But I am going to demand that I get to see the data.
I mean, Ernie, we understand. Ernie, we understand. I know, we understand. We, everybody will see it. Don't worry. You're all going to see it. There was a draft of it that was.
Before, before any suggestions, before there's any formulation or any suggestions or anything.
Understand. We understand. Thank you. No, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I'm not familiar or aware of any experts in any context. That said, I, I mean, in the context of humanity, and I'm not going to do the name calling that, that was addressed to me by Brian. In the context of humanity, I'd love to see a report. I think I agree with everything Brian said with respect to concerns about this potential study. But I've seen nothing published that relates to anything Brian said, nor did Rod say anything related to anything Brian said. So what am I to infer? If I choose the high road, maybe there's a report out there that I'm not aware of. Let's get the report. Let's deliberate it. And let's make recommendations accordingly.
Mark, go ahead.
Actually, I have a question for Rod. Right, I, I don't know the scope of the contract with the, the consultants who are doing the density study. Is there scope for, or is there additional cost or scope if we were to provide input at this point? Like, I, I don't know the scope. I didn't write the contract. I wasn't involved. I, but if I hear Ernie's words of like, we should be involved in the report before it's done. I've also been a consultant and I worry like, oh, I'm happy to sell you 300 more hours at a certain rate. So I just, can you, can you give just some, some guidelines as to what was done? I was not here when that kicked off.
I, I don't have the scope in front of me. I appreciate, I appreciate the question, Mark. So what I would say is, is that the consultant firm is ADS out of, out of Plattsburgh, New York. And there's area of specialization in this regard is GIS analysis. And so the raw data going in is the history of subdivisions from roughly 1990 to 2020. Using a variety of data sets and then being able to map that and observe relationships using GIS as a as a tool for illuminating settlement patents. And so the raw data, for want of a better term, could be, you know, useful or interesting to some people, but I'm not sure that it's gonna, you know, jump off the page, as it were, and, and make things clear for people. It's more the exercise of mapping it that we've hired them to do. They were not hired to engage in a broad public outreach process. And they were not hired to work at length with the planning commission so much as conduct this GIS analysis, which is for want of a better term, you know, kind of a really backroom kind of procedure to do. It's time consuming and it's tedious. It's not, there's nothing particularly exciting to look at while it's actually happening, requires some level of expertise and familiarity with software. And then to generate a series of maps, which actually are instructive and are important as an interpretive tool. And that in conjunction with me as the planner, be able to actually present these maps as a way of illustrating what the settlement pattern has been. And then what possible, you know, first of all, was to establish whether the density factor tool as it currently exists is achieving the goal that the zoning regulations set, set out to, you know, set out to achieve with the tool, right? So he's, so to put that question more eloquently, does the tool work? And so the analysis at this point suggests that there's a weak relationship between the tool and the outcome in terms of land use patents. It's weak in a particular way, which is to say that the patent of land development features some level of parcel merging as much as parcel subdivision. And that the patent is set around what we understand to be. set around what we understand to be certain other features that are prominent in the market, including the minimum parcel size for participating in current use. So rather than getting small parcels that fragment land or break up farmland or break up forest far away from the village, what we're actually tending to see is a patent of amassing or maintaining fairly large parcels that allow that qualify for current use treatment. Or when we do see subdivisions, we see the minimum parcel size being set at at or above qualification for current use. So that in that in some ways is contradictory to what the density factor tool was was designed to achieve. So if that's the case, then is there a modification that you can make to that tool to make it more effective? Or is there a different path that could allow the planning commission to achieve its goals as expressed in the town plan? And in its discussions of the of the review of the land use regulations, they could do a better job of the density factor tool or make it easier to operate. Those were the basically the instructions that were given to the to the technicians, and it's a highly technical task, and it's not. It's not intended to generate a lot of public discourse. It's just sort of a analytical process, but in the hands of you as the planning commission is to take that information, look at those maps, interpret it, ask questions, think about it. You have the options of reject the work and reject the findings, but pay the consultants and thank them for their time. Change the density factor tool, leave the density factor tool as it is and say, there's no problem here. It's it's working the way we intended it to. Or come up with a different a different approach to it to either achieve goals that you think are important to achieve now or to try and achieve the goals that were set for the density factor tool in the first place. That all that process is a deliberative discursive process that would be appropriately done by the planning commission in in the setting like this one now, a regular monthly meeting where, you know, as a group, you explore the material that you've been presented and then discuss, you know, in a in a kind of a welcoming and open way, what it is that you hope to see the new regulations doing. And so I I I think that all I'd want to say is from that preliminary presentation, which was some months ago now, I think we were able to establish that the patent of land settlement in the town does not show a strong correlation with the way the density tool is working. That and there's a huge fat asterisk at the end of that sentence, which is to say we have very low levels of development and change. And so we're talking about a very limited sample size here. And there's all sorts of, you know, very important statistical kind of statements that you'd want to make about not wanting to overplay the significance of the patent. But what we can see is a pattern that's definitely you know, something else is happening out there in the sense of what's happening in the rural residential areas that is not, I think, was not envisaged by the people who developed the density factor tool.
Thanks, Rob. Do we have anything new to add, Ernie and Jeff, than beyond what you've said before? We understand you want to be involved in the process, the process. This is Rod laid out.
Yes.
My understanding of what's gonna happen.
What what I wanted to say is is that it should be it should be made clear. There are this this town, the original GIS maps that this town had were made by a bunch of volunteers, of which I was one in the early 90s. The resources and all that sort of stuff. You know, we're talking about contracting experts now to state, let alone out of the town. Again, my concern is that we're using experts as a way of substituting or or quieting residents or of the town, P townspeople from having a say. And that's why I I don't think there's a big problem with telling the experts that we've hired. Stop what you're doing, you know, give us, give us the data and all that stuff and let the board look at that stuff first. We have one expert on, we have our own experts already on the board. I can understand the stuff. Jeff is on the board. He understands this stuff inside and out, too. There is people on this board that can could could take that raw data and at least get a glimmer first before the 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 people that have been hired then make their their recommendations, which I really don't think they should be making recommendations. I think they should just say this is what the data means and leave it at that and let us make our own recommendations.
Okay, thanks, Ernie. Jeff, you had something?
So as a land use expert for 40 years and as one who actually wrote the density tool Rod's talking about, it would have been nice to been engaged in the entire process. I'd be delighted to see what the information shows. One of our key issues was promoting or discouraging development in the hinterlands and promoting development downtown, for lack of a better way to say it. I understand there are a lot of factors that relate relate to this. But as one of the authors and an expert in this arena, I'd love to be a part of this process in a deliberative process going forward.
Hey, Mark.
Sorry. Thanks, Jackie. I should have kept my hand raised. I just had a follow up question for Rod. And Rod, I apologize. I just want to confirm that I'm saying I heard what you said in a way that makes sense to me. So if you disagree, please just say, yeah, no, not that at all. At a high level, from a process perspective, they there's some data on where stuff is in the town. I can get that through our GIS for the state of Vermont. Maybe they pulled that. Maybe they pulled something else. But there's some data on where things are in the town and where that has been historical. Is that safe so far? You're nodding, so I'm gonna. Okay, so I haven't screwed up yet. Thank you. We gave that to some guy who's probably a PhD and writes like our code or code in R or some some sort of GIS software, say, like, how far are things from each other? How big are the plots? Still, hey, you're still nodding. So good. Okay. And then the result of that is there are some trends they've seen in those data over 30 years. Still on track. Okay. And my understanding of what you said, Rod, is that the result that is forthcoming, which you gave us maybe a high level overview of is after the guy wrote some code and said, oh, what are the trends? It sounds like there are some trends, which you did walk us through. I'm not gonna go into like, I'm not disputing or agreeing with those, but I just want to make sure I fully understood the process of someone looked at the data, wrote some code to say what's similar, what correlates, what doesn't correlate. And there is some, that's the output that I expect will be coming from this density site. Jackie started, just goes so detailed, but I just want to make sure I understood the process of what has happened to.
I think it's important. Yeah, we got to get on the same page. It's good.
Rod, you nodded enough that I will lower my hand and say, thank you. I have no no further questions.
Yep, Brian.
But Brian does.
Just one minor GIS point of clarification, not points. It's like designations of polygons, right? It's it's over time, the combination and separation of shapes on the map. And, you know, Jeff, I'm sure has colleagues at his firm who do this kind of work. I have personally graduate training in GIS, but this is a different kind of analysis. And it's an analysis that we committed to when we initiated this study many, many months ago. And I don't know what to say here. We're at this time, Ernie, where we'd love your input. Everyone wants to have input, but we're not gonna like wind back the clock and do the study ourselves. So we were all at the meetings where this is approved and discussed. Preliminary findings have been shared by Rod from time to time. We're gonna get the preliminary report. We're gonna talk it over. Everyone agrees with you. I don't really know what else to say.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to move on to the next topic. Ernie, I think we, is there anything new that you want to add?
I I'm not.
Hasn't been said before.
I'm not sure because Brian seems to re sort of package to what I was trying to say, and I'm not quite, I I don't think I agree with what he said. First of all, I don't feel like that I've been apprised of that much of the information that that this group, this group is digging up, not not the planning commission, the contractors digging up about the density density issues. And and second of all, there's a big difference between them making recommendations and them and and them simply conveying what they found showing showing, you know, bringing our attention to connections that they're making. I don't think that that I think there's a big difference between those two things. And I think that as I said, what I see is when experts provide their recommendations, their suggestions, whatever you want to call them. And it's not just this commission. It's it's throughout this town's government, and I've seen it at Trok a lot and a few other places, too. I've seen it in the legislature. Experts seem to basically kill any debate by the people who are actually going to make the decisions.
Ernie, really? Would you tell your law clients this, that you don't have any special expertise? Really?
As a matter of fact, just just, I mean, I think that's a fair question. In fact, I make sure that my clients have a lot have given me a lot to think about because they are the they are the experts in their particular set of circumstances, and that's how I win my cases because I know what my clients are doing. There's a big difference. That makes me an expert how to get it done. They're the experts on what happened. That's that's how a lawyer should be working and certainly how JP Morgan and a bunch of big, big ass places. Okay?
I've got an idea. I've got an idea. So we have seen this report at least twice in March and April, I think it was at our meetings. I'm gonna suggest we recirculate those and and then we will await another more reporting and another conversation hopefully at our next meeting. Aaron and Rod, you can advise us when we'll have something to look at. Okay, that would be great. I'd like to move on now.
Yeah, hey, Jackie. I had my hand up.
Jeff, you have something to say?
Yeah, I did. So I appreciate what you just said about recirculating reports, whatever the report is. And what Brian said, hey, Brian, you know, I completely disagree with you. I spend 365 days a year dealing with expert stuff, and I haven't seen it yet.
Okay. Okay, next item on our agenda, we've got the wastewater update. Rod, you want to talk to us about that?
Yep, I've been playing phone tag and email tag with the consultant team. And at this point, I don't have anything else to to update people with, but we're hoping we'll have something in the very near future. So that's it.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the recommendation to the select board of our zoning administrator appointment. Welcome again to Aaron. And thank you for circulating your bio information. I appreciate that. This is procedure whereby we have a motion that we make here. We recommend that Aaron be appointed as our zoning administrator. And then that goes to the select board. Select board makes the final approval. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. A really simple question. I just want to make sure I understand. Rod is presently our zoning administrator, and we are moving to Aaron as the new zoning administrator. And that I think that means that Rod is no longer the zoning administrator. I don't want to assume just because I think that that's accurate, but can you just confirm? I see all the nodding, so I'm just gonna go with. Okay, all right, I'm done. Thank you. I know the questions. I just want to confirm what that the implication of making Rod the zoning administrator was. Thank you.
Okay.
No further comments on this topic.
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Jeff, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I do. A bunch of comments. So the planning commission used to have an active role in engaging staff, hiring staff, et cetera, until Neil Fulton came along. We've had no role since. We're being asked rubber stamp something yet again. I I don't know, Aaron. You know, I engage myriad clients, myriad employees, myriad coworkers in terms of hiring, et cetera. This this, whatever it is we're doing doesn't match anything I'm familiar with. So until then, I've just got to vote no. It doesn't reflect on Aaron.
Okay. Okay. Any other comment? Go ahead, Brian.
Jeff, just so you know, in case you're wondering, Aaron's email address is easy to get. Just and he's happy to meet. He's very friendly. I think you would enjoy getting to know him.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yeah, hey, Brian. I'd love to do that. Has nothing to do with what I said. Again, it is a human in the context of humanity in our community. I'd love to have due process. I'd love to see things done that consider our community first and foremost, and that likely would occur, you know, engage Aaron.
Okay. Do we have, we ready to vote? I'll do a roll call vote then. Start with Brian.
Yes, for me.
Mark?
Yes, for me.
Melissa?
Yes, for me.
Jeff?
No.
Ernie? I think you're on mute, Ernie.
Hey.
And I vote yes. Okay. And I did get a note, by the way, from Ben's to say that he was unexpectedly detained, so he won't be able to join us. All right, just so you know. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to appoint a clerk. Rod's been serving in this capacity for us. Thank you very much. And
I make a motion to appoint Aaron, please.
Okay, do we have a second? Melissa, thank you. Any discussion? Jeff, you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have experience with Aaron with respect to minutes beyond the last minutes, which from my perspective didn't reflect, it reflected portions of our discussion, but not other portions. So I'd like to see fair and balanced minutes that either treat everyone the same or engage in the same level of detail or the same lack of detail, and that's not what I've seen today.
Any other comments? Okay, we called a question then. Ernie, how do you vote?
I.
Jeff, how do you vote?
Hey.
Melissa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, for me.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Great. Okay, moving right along, we've got announcements, reports, directors update, and affordable housing committee update and correspondence. Announcements. Do we have any announcements? Okay. Rod, you want to give us update on how things are going?
No, I don't have anything much to add. I've been training Aaron and introducing him to the town. He's been doing really well. That's been the majority of my time spent on planning work and Aaron, of course, as you know, is also poised to take over the zoning administrative position. So we've been doing some draft decisions for the DIB and so forth. That's where the majority of my time has been spent in the last three weeks with Aaron. So that's about it for me. There's nothing else particularly going on. Um, I think that this, I'm gonna use this as a segue to I hope Brian's report on affordable housing, that just that there's been some continuing dialogue in the region in particular around affordable housing, and I'm sure all of you have seen the commitment from large employers in the Upper Valley to commit funds to the construction of affordable housing or missing middle housing in the in the valley. And, you know, so I would see, you know, if people have got questions or interested in what that those with that program looks like, I think that that could be an interesting topic for future planning commission meetings. But I'll let Brian take it away.
Jackie, Jeff, Jeff has a agenda.
Jeff, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, as a participant in the creation of that fund, I'm glad to help the PC engage folks that can best explain what it is we're doing.
Brian, you want to provide more background on affordable housing subcommittee? Brian, you want to um provide more background on affordable housing subcommittee?
Yeah, yeah, just um in case somebody didn't see the list serve. Today, or I guess the digest today, uh, we announced that next week at our meeting, very early scheduled meeting, a week from yesterday. We'll be having an information session on the issue of affordable dwelling units. And um maybe in the past, uh, some things you've heard or or things you've read have been um. A bit vague on the details, what it means uh for homeowners who may be interested in. Developing an affordable or accessory dwelling unit on their property. Uh, this session is intended to be much more. Action oriented to help you and um your family make decisions about your property. And so we're. We've brought in a couple of experts uh to support the conversation and see their bios uh in the in the list serve post. But we'd love to have uh any or all of you join next week. Uh, should be a good conversation. It's one small way. That folks in Norwich can contribute to diversifying uh the housing stock here. It's not a cure all, uh, but it's something and it's uh this public information session is in realization of. One of the items in the housing strategy uh that we acknowledge this part of the town plan. So love to have your participation next week. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. The agenda looks really good for that. Remind us of the date again. It's Monday?
I believe it's the seventeenth, yeah, next.
October seventeen, yeah, okay. Okay. Thanks. Uh, and also thank you for your follow up with the historic uh preservation commission that came up at the last meeting. You want to talk about that briefly?
Yeah, so their next meeting is this Thursday. I'll be attending. Let's see what they have to say.
Good. Okay. Good job. Uh, anything else on? Item number seven here on our agenda. Okay, if not, uh, let's go to the open meeting law discussion. Okay. So we've um lots of materials, the um video of the training that we received last year. There was a link to that in our agenda, as well as the packet that I distributed from the Secretary of State's office. It is an important topic. I think we do all work hard to abide by it. We were born at night, not lot, not last night, Jeff. I know you're shaking your head, but um it's it is something that um I think we all take very, very seriously. And um. I I also think that um. You know. And we can go around the table on this and hear from each of us, but from my perspective, and this is my personal perspective, my observation is. You know. We use this as a hammer in our in our town. It's constantly, constantly being raised and uh in a way that I don't think is um. Uh, very productive. Um, I think uh becomes like the scarlet letter, you know, I feel like I'm, you know. Living in a Nathaniel Hawthorne novel here, we have O M L on people's backs and um. Uh, and it's a shame because I think we have a lot of an awful lot of good people, lots of good people in our town, lots of dedicated volunteers, people trying to do their best. And um. You know, to. Constantly be calling people out on this. Um, it doesn't mean we can't ever talk to each other. It doesn't mean we can't ever share information. You know, there are guidelines, of course, but um. Anyway. Well, those are some thoughts I have about it. I think the specific incident, Jeff, that you were concerned about was this summer. And um, you know. From my perspective, and I did consult, you know, with my vice chair on this to make sure that I was thinking it through correctly. We were asked to. From I put together an agenda, what's our agenda for the next three months? That's what the question was. Those are all publicly available materials. They're on our website. There are things that we discuss regularly. It's in our packet. Uh, there's like no new information, no new information. It is. It is very well known. About what it is we're supposed to be working on, so. We had all agreed to take August off. And um, you know, I felt that. Uh, the request that was not a big stretch, not a big, not a, not, not, not really. A lot to think about in terms of the response. That was a reasonable way to handle that request. That's the judgment that was used. And um, I I don't think it warrants, you know. A lot more angst than has already been expressed. Other thoughts about opening? Melissa, you want to talk about, you know, the purpose of open meeting law, your thoughts about it, how we're doing with it? I'd like to go around and hear from everybody, okay?
Okay, I mean, I think we've we've done a good job as of recently. I, you know, I see emails come in. I just don't respond to them. Um. You know, if it's something about scheduling, I know we can respond if we're available or something like that. But other than that, you know, I sometimes worry that when people send them out, it's almost bait to try and get us to respond. Because, you know, if we have these discussions going on email, we're we're not supposed to. So. Uh, that's why I like to limit most of our conversations to the actual meetings. Um, I feel like we tried to do other things. Like when I was chair, we tried to have subcommittees and we just got nailed. People, you know, were out like. That just trying to stop us from having these subcommittees and finding fault with them. And so. To me, when I was chair, it just seemed like it it wasn't worth it. Um, it was impossible to do in a way that other people in town felt was correct. Um, so my my strategy is just, you know, try and do as much as we can. We're we're in this forum and noticed and. The towns aware we're meeting and people can come and observe. And I don't know, that that's my strategy because it does seem to be used so much um against, especially this commission.
Yeah. Okay. Brian, your thoughts on this?
I don't have much more to add. Um, you know. I haven't seen an example on this commission where someone acted in bad faith, you know, intentionally intentionally to obscure. Public access to the process of of the commission's work. You know, I think the example from from Ernie a couple of weeks ago is is illustrative. It's just a goof. You know, it's not, it's not to to prevent anyone from seeing the inner workings of of our deliberations. No policy was was advanced. It's just a goof and and we're all learning and we're all trying. And I think if we accept that about each other, we can do the actual work of the commission. And um, yeah, that's that's just my my hope and my belief. Thanks, Jackie.
Okay. Okay. Ernie?
Uh, the fact is that I was actually called on the carpet for my goof. Um, it wasn't so, so. I felt that I did have to apologize because I was asked, I was pointed out that I had caused other people to sort of become in violation. And. It was one of the things that I I wanted my my. Email put on record for is this rec, the 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 apology, I'm going to call it, refer to it as that, is that. I had spoken to Jen Prosser. About did I or did I not actually violate the O M L meeting law? And she said, well, any. Anything that it goes towards advancing an issue. Sh, other than agenda and scheduling.
Right.
Basically, if if it's if it's if it's responded to even. If it if it solicits a response or even if a response is made that's not solicited. It is still uh a violation of the open meeting law. Now. The interesting thing is that um the email I received specifically asked. You know, for some sort of a response. Um, and you know, I was aware that, you know, it's been sent around to everybody. Um, I, at that particular point, was not uh thinking about that. Particular formulation that Jen took, Jen Prost did when I uh responded to it. But then when I put the and or when I put the 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 one out to everybody, I thought I was actually trying to sort of be open by making it sure that. Everybody can see what's going on because I, from my point of view, this was not just a matter of. Recounting our agenda. This was a matter, I mean, I disagree. I just, I I still disagree that it that this is all we've been doing, you know? I mean, our agenda is is driven. Not by what the planning commission really is deciding, but it's driven by it from from my point of view, there are outside. Things that are happening, things that people don't want. Other people to know. From what I can tell. Okay, there are there, there's a lot of. The the select board, it it's it's more clear that there are, there is, there are outs improper influences on 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 the town's government. In the select board than in the planning commission. But on the other hand, the planning commission deals with issues that are very much in the um. Very much dealt with by a lot of vested interests. And those vested interests would love to see, for instance, a town opened up to development. And. I don't, I I so this agenda that was that was that was supposedly going to be told to the select board, I disagreed with that. That was what it should, what it should say with. So therefore.
Okay.
It's about policy. What I was responding to is policy.
Okay, so. At the moment, it became clear that this wasn't a simple matter. People couldn't agree with it. Then we. Shut down the whole thing and said, we'll do it at the September meeting, which is what we did. Okay? It wasn't so. Anyway.
Right, but that was that that there was there was no acknowledgement that that the initial one was was a. You know, like I had, there is a bunch of steps, you know, you have to acknowledge that you've made the violation.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, and and only because.
We haven't done that.
Because I didn't see it that way. I was thinking it was, in my mind, it was an agenda. We were setting an agenda. That's all we were doing, okay? A very, very, you know, that that's what it was, but um, but I I understand there are different viewpoints, but. As I say. I would not have proceeded otherwise if I had thought it was something else. Okay?
Yeah, and I I'm not, what I'm saying is is that.
Yeah.
I thought otherwise, too, but I still had to apologize. I still had to show, I had acknowledged, I've done it, and then I had to acknowledge, I had to, I had to say what I was going to do to cure it.
What what we observed, Ernie, is you started getting into policy. You were having a big debate about, you know.
Well, that's what it invited. That's that's what I'm saying is is the way it was raised invited it. Invited a po- a policy discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff, you have something? Or let's hear your your point of view.
Uh, yeah, I mean. I have a ton to say. My personal view is over the last five years, the planning commission, along with the select board, has attempted to subvert the open meeting law. This isn't about bait because um the open meeting law is simple to adhere to. I agree with Melissa's premise that everything we discuss should be at the planning commission level. I don't care if it's an agenda. I don't care if it's a policy, whatever it is. We need to embrace it deliberately deliberately and then decide how to go forward. So uh, you you know, beyond that. A goof, um, you know, no, like Ernie said, let's just own what we did. I think in the context of Roger Arnold, who's the select board chair, was. Asking for something from the P C, that needs to be put on an agenda, and then we we discuss it at our next P C meeting. There's no context uh where uh action can be taken on that because of the policy issues that Ernie's brought up. And to the extent we individually email people to subvert the process. That that's not cool. Same with staff, you know, if we're going to reach out to staff and try to subvert the process by getting staff's input when staff has no idea what's going on. And and you know, this, 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 whatever this uh, you know, as a participant in this thing that the town's attorneys did was ludicrous. It didn't help us at all. It has nothing to do with open meeting law considerations. Open meeting law is really simple. All you got to do is say, subcommittees, planning commission, here's what we're going to chat about, here's when it's going to be advertised. And make it public. It's really simple. Nothing behind the scenes behind that, kind of like. Melissa was referring to. So I want to pick up on uh one of the comments, this notion of hammer. You know, I watched Ernie get bullied and hammered and beaten to death by planning commission members, staff members. Our town's attorney, both publicly in 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 a in a private session. It was horrifying for me to watch the conduct. I've watched our planning commission invite our our chair allows select board members to come and name call planning commission members because they don't agree. It's horrifying what we've been seeing. Hammer? So let's have a conversation that allows folks to share their thoughts. Not undermine them and attack them accordingly, and allow all the public to come in accordance with what the open meeting law requires. It's really, really simple.
Good, thanks. Mark?
Thanks, Jackie. I guess. I'm the newest person in this group on this role. Sorry, Aaron, you're the newest person. I'm the second newest person in this group on this on this Zoom. Um, my understanding, one of my takeaways from the open meal on the trainings is that. It seems like there's a fairly simple way if we screw up of saying. We did this, we've got fourteen days, I assume, to just post something. Otherwise, you pay a five hundred dollar fine. It's a misdemeanor. I'm not saying that's what, that's our backup plan, but. That seems to be the only enforcement. Does does anyone reading that differently than me? I mean, like, if we're trying to do this and we do it, but we make a mistake. It looks like it's pretty clear. We just got fourteen days to say, oh, oops, we made a mistake and it's pub, it's published. And if we made a decision, we just have to avoid that decision to make it in a public setting. Anyone agree or disagree with? With my understanding of that, just really just my education.
No, that's what it says. That's what it says. Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah, if I may, before five years ago, we made mistakes, we call a special meeting, we'd resolve it, done.
Okay, so awesome. So I say, assuming that's that's my understanding. It feels like when there's a mix up, we can we can do that. I'd like to think that we try. I also, I guess my personal opinion is. I I I've talked to a number of folks who are on this board, like I've tried to head to one-on-one meetings with most of the folks in on this Zoom room, if you will. Mostly to educate myself, like I I'm. I'm in no way, shape or form an expert in really much, so. My understanding, though, of reading those same regulations that you guys all read is that me educating myself in the one-on-one settings is no violation. It's not in a committee. It's not an agenda. Um, I think that's each of our responsibilities to try to be as educated as possible to come to these meetings with. Uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully clear thought, so. And if that's ever a mistake, I'll just say, sorry, and I don't know, I don't know where to post that. But I guess I'll ask you guys when that happens. So. That's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Yeah. It doesn't mean we can't talk to each other. Ever. And uh, you know. Uh, okay. So what's next? What's the next step? Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, to state the obvious, let's move forward. And I'm trying to capture from. Melissa, in a deliberative context, to the extent any issue is raised. Let's purpose to put it on an agenda if that requires a motion. So the planning commission can deliberate about it and decide where it's going to go. And that way the public will be noticed. And to the extent we screw up, because we all do. Like Mark said, let's own it and fix it.
Okay.
Within fourteen days, Jeff, sorry. I see you.
Good, okay, all right. It sounds like a way forward. All right. Next item. Approved minutes. We have a motion to approve.
I moved.
Thank you. Um, Brian, do we have a second? Melissa, second, thank you. Any? Questions before we vote? Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, so I I mean, I got these when Aaron posted them last week. Frankly, I didn't have enough time, so I and I don't remember Aaron's date, whether it was Thursday, and I'm not demeaning Aaron. It's not my intent. What I did review, I haven't had enough time to make suggestions or edits, so and and I have a bunch, so I'm going to vote no. In the meantime, I I. I'm I'm not trying to undermine Aaron.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
Actually, Mark's hand was up, but.
Is that is that a new hand, Mark?
I can be really quick. Do I have to abstain because I? Uh, I can be really quick. Do I have to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting? I just don't know. No, oh wait, uh, I got, I got opposite nods from Rod and.
Wait, what was your question? I didn't hear the question.
Oh, when we get to the voting, since I wasn't at the meeting, do I have to abstain from voting on the minutes, since I have no idea what you guys, I mean, I read it, but I.
Yeah.
I'll abstain. I don't wanna cause a ruckus.
That's fine. That's fine, no problem. We understand that. That's good.
Sorry, Brian.
Yeah, that's good. Alright, uh, so we have, Brian made a motion, Brian, you had, I think, go ahead.
I had a comment. I'm, I'm happy to retract my motion. Jeff, if you have lots of substantive comments that you feel are really important. We can do this at the next meeting. Happy to.
Just, I just wanna point out, though, we always, I mean, the, the me, we know when, when the packet's gonna come out and, uh, anyway. We should be ready for. We should, like, get ready for it, you know?
I had plenty of time to review it. There's, like, available video recordings of the meetings. Uh, no one ever should, no members of the public, absent Linda, who's lovely and amazing, ever shows up and expresses any interest in our work. Um, but if still, uh, you know, that aside, Jeff, if you feel strongly, I'm happy to retract my motion. We can do this next week.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna be polite. So, five days is not time, Jackie, it's bull crap. You know, with deaths in the family and other stuff, a whole bunch of other stuff, life, you know, et cetera. So my experience before five years ago and other things, we had weeks to review stuff. We had weeks to, weeks to process. There's no pressure to process minutes. So at the end of the day, uh, y'all can push it forward. Uh, I just haven't personally had time of a bunch of comments. It's not gonna hurt us to go into the next month, and I'm not gonna, not gonna pull the bull crap card to say we've done all this work and you know when it's gonna happen. Let, let's take the time, let's be deliberative, let's, let's turn over a new leaf so that we can all have input.
Alright, so, sorry, Jeff, I'm not sure I got what you wanted. Do you wanna wait?
Brian, I can't comment tonight other than vote no. There's just not enough time.
Okay, alright, I just, just so we're all clear, we, we post the agenda and the minutes, uh, and the packet and everything else.
So, I.
Thursday before the Tuesday, that, that's, I mean, that is our requirement. Um, did I get that right? Is it more time than that, Jeff? No, when is the time? When is, when, when?
No, you're right, Jackie, it's just not much ti- and I'm not demeaning staff.
Okay, I, but we should all be clear about this, cause I think it's important. If we're, if we're gonna only be able to talk in these meetings, we at least gotta be prepared, right?
No, I get that, but I got huge deadlines for Monday. I can't focus on the stuff I got on Thursday, you know?
Okay, go ahead, uh, um. Bring this down here.
Yeah, so, so, under the current provisions of, um, open meeting law in the, in the post-COVID context. The, um, town has, or the commission, the planning commission has 10 days. With which to post draft minutes, and that's been adhered to. So the draft minutes are generally posted on the town website within 10 days of the. And, and it was this time. And so if the meetings are recurring every month, and you are. Having the mi- the minutes posted 10 days after this meeting. You have roughly two and, two, two and a third weeks to, um, review. The minutes before the next meeting, so, um. It's not to make a point about whether that's enough time or not enough time, it's just to remind you that the minutes are posted and you generally get a notice. Via email that the minutes have been, the draft, the draft minutes have been posted.
Right.
Uh, usually on the 10th day after the meeting.
Right, and then we get another reminder when we get the packet and the. We get two hits at it, actually, is, is.
The draft minutes, right?
Right.
And that, that usually comes out four days before the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. So, just to be clear about the time we have to do this. Go ahead, Jeff. Wait, you're on mute.
Thank you. So, since I haven't found the minutes to necessarily comport with the packet. I'm not comfortable taking action till I see the packet. That may change going forward with Aaron on board. At this juncture, minutes are supposed to represent what we discussed and what's forthcoming. If I don't have what's forthcoming, I can't evaluate the minutes accordingly.
I don't know if I understand that, but go ahead, Doug. Okay, Brad?
The minutes, the draft minutes are a record of the proceedings of the previous meeting. And they're, as, as under, under meeting law provisions, they're required to be posted. Public places, including the town website, 10 days or less after the meeting. And in the entire time that I've been doing this, we've either been adhering to the 10-day requirement under COVID conditions. Or prior to that, it was five, five days, and they were posted, so. And they're posted on the website and don't, you know, so they're, they're available on the website, they're available. Um, and they are a record of the, of the previous meetings proceedings. They're not intended necessarily to be any kind of. They're not supposed, they're not necessarily intended to have a function for determining or predicting what's gonna happen at the next meeting, except, I guess. Uh, where you would review the minutes from the last meeting to determine what, what could potentially be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, we always discuss that at the end of the meeting.
Right, and the gen- and the agenda has to be posted, um, no less than two days before the, the meeting date, so. You get the packet, which can, which includes the agenda and the draft minutes. Typically on the Thursday, or worst-case scenario, the Friday before the, uh, forthcoming meeting, which gives people a weekend to look at the, at the work.
Right, right. Yeah, Ernie?
Um, I just wanted to ask. I, 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 you know, I get like 300 emails a day, um, so sometimes I miss things and so on. So I can't really say whether I. Whether, when I don't see the, uh, draft minutes. Um, which I think you guys said was 10 days after the meeting. I can't say that I have or haven't seen them, uh, or anything. But what I would suggest then, and maybe you're even doing it, and maybe that's what I'm missing, is. You know, the draft minutes be emailed to us individually, not just posted on the website.
They are emailed individually, we get them, we get, yeah, we.
It is, you know, that's what I'm saying, you know, that's something, I mean, I look, for instance, for the agen- for the agenda, I look for the. Plan, for the packets and stuff like that. I don't tend to look for, because, you know.
We get a notice, we get, I, I get an email that has, here's the minutes, I click on the link, there they are, just like clockwork, you know? And if I don't get it at that shot, I get it when I, but I, it comes in the, um, in the packet for the meeting, so.
But what we're saying is, is in the packet, it's, it's too late, really, kinda.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, it's sent earlier than that. You know, we have two shots at it, we have two shots. Um, Brian, do you still have something, or we go to Mark? Okay, go to Mark.
Um, Jackie, um. This might not be the time to bring up a potential agenda point for next meeting.
No, not yet. Hold on.
Okay, alright.
I know, yeah, yeah, we just, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes, there's, uh, by Brian, there was a second by Melissa. And, uh, we're talking about how much time we have to do these minutes. I just wanna say, you know, if we have aspirations, I know, to do, have all this. Input and, and deliberation, everything going on here, that's great, but, you know, we need to get the simple jobs done, uh, you know, and. And, and to me, approving the minutes is one of the simple jobs, so. Brian, did you wanna withdraw this motion? Can we vote on it at least? Okay, great, let's vote on it. Call to question, all in favor of, uh, approving the minutes? I'll take a roll call. Ernie?
Uh, I'm gonna say for the sake of, of peace, and because I don't usually have much to consider, say about the minutes, I.
Okay, Mark?
I will abstain, not having been there.
Thank you. Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Nay.
Brian?
Yes, for me.
And yes, for me. Okay, thanks a lot. Let's move on, um, the, uh. Any other business? If not, we can move to future meeting schedule, work plan, et cetera. Um, November 8th is our next meeting, um, and something I just wanna point out to this group, the, um, in January. Uh, the authorization to be on Zoom all the time after almost three years, uh, is run out. And, um, no, and, and so it's time to start meeting in person. Uh, and I guess a question for you all, uh, we could start doing that in November. There would be, um. Chatted with Aaron a little bit about this, uh, we could. Try to make some accommodation for people to be online. It's, it's not the best, but we could, uh, attempt to do that. You know, we've tried that in the past. But in any event, um, would we like to start meeting in person in November? Seeing Jeffrey, thumbs up. Anybody else? Thumbs up? Ernie's thumbs up. No, Mark is nodding his head, I think. Thumbs up. Okay, um, Brian, Melissa, what do you think? What say you?
Um, I say, no, not any sooner than we have to. I think, uh, you know, there's, there's a benefit to being in person, uh, you know, looking someone in the eye. And, you know, there's a connection and a stability that has to, has to happen there. But that said, the duration of the meetings, um, you know, like, like, uh, you know, to a lesser extent than the extremes. And the select board is, seems almost designed to reduce participation, especially by those with young families. And so if, if we are forced to be back in person. I'd like to, I'd like to consider, um. Uh, pushing the meeting time back, which is, um, you know, something that other town groups have done. Be more accommodating to folks with other schedules.
Back meeting later, is that what you're saying? Okay, okay, thanks. I mean, I guess I know. Jeff, you had your hand up.
Uh, yeah, so, last time we went through this, I thought Rod Francis did a nice job managing something in the, in the, uh. Community area with respect to folks who could access digitally, and if it's Brian or Melissa, I, I don't have any problem with that. I think we should provide an opportunity for those who are less comfortable, and I'm not saying who is, to join remotely. As, uh, those of us who are more comfortable meeting in person, meet in person, so I, I wouldn't rule out. Remote participation is what I'm trying to say.
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, I'm not sure who's next, maybe Ernie?
I just wanted to say I agree with Brian about moving it back to, um, seven o'clock, um, at least. Uh, I think that, I've, I've often thought that 6:30 was too early for someone who has families and, and, or someone to get home to, or whatever, so. I think I, I agree with Brian on that one.
Okay, Mark?
Your kids are really cute to listen to in the background.
I second that. Um, you distracted me. What was I gonna say, Ernie?
I think it's a cute.
No, no, I said, I seconded, I seconded the cute kids. Um, oh, sorry, I'm on the. Sorry, I, I've been on a lot, on a ton of stuff that's both in-person and fully remote and hybrid. And my takeaway is that hybrid kinda sucks, and it's not going away. So, a- as much as we can, you know, allow folks who cannot make it in person to participate in Zoom, that I think that, that is, that's, that's fine. Um, if anyone's tried to done, if anyone's participated in the school board thing lately. I mean, like, good luck, like, the audio is horrible, you're participating on Zoom, you can't hear a thing. The camera's looking, you know, the wrong way, or it's, it's like so smart, it's like picking up, like, the echo off the wall in the corner behind the person that's speaking. As opposed to the person that's speaking.
Right.
So, if, if there is a way that we can maybe find a way to just make it a little bit easier for everyone, both those who are in person and both the, and those who are remote. Um, I've, hope we lost somebody. I, I've worked remote long enough that when you're the only person remote. Yeah, you, you just miss out on a lot, and that, that's, that's somewhat suboptimal, so I guess if we do that. Actually, maybe, maybe I take back my recommendation for the next meeting to be in person, but maybe we can have an agenda item. This is where I was going before, Jackie, sorry, I'm sneaking it in. In the next item, can we talk about like the, how do we wanna communicate with each other if we're both remote and in person, in that mix? And just some, like, some, like, I know, in addition to the Roberts rules piece, but just what's the, what's the best way to facilitate? So that everyone can participate and feels like they can participate, uh, without, um, in, in a safe place.
If it's hybrid, you, you're asking, is that what you're saying?
Regardless of what, regardless of how November is, I think, like, it might be worth an agenda item for us to talk about, like, what, what works for each of us. As far as communication, both in Zoom and in person and hybrid, so that we each feel like we can still contribute. Like, maybe that's, I, I would like to propose that an agenda item. That's my sneaky way to get it in there before it's, before it's on your agenda to talk about the next agenda item. But it's, this, this was the topic.
Referring to the actual conduct of the meeting, that's what I'm not clear about. Conducting a hybrid meeting, doing that well, is that what you, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, alright, okay, um, go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, uh, possibly waiting until December to come back in person. My only reason for this is that I have conducted a lot of hybrid meetings, but I have not conducted one here. I have no idea what kind of equipment the town has set up.
Sure.
That's an idea, he's laughing, so I just wanna make sure that I'm prepared to facilitate that. To the best of my ability that everyone can both hear what's going on and that there's no.
Sure.
Technical, uh, you know, Armageddon's that happen.
Okay.
So I just think that, that, I mean, you do have until January still, so I think possibly waiting until the December meeting. Just to give me some more time to make sure everything is ready to go.
Okay. I think we'd all be willing to give you that, uh, Mark, go ahead.
As a, as a corollary for that, like, Aaron, if you're gonna take this meeting in that, in the office next time, I'm happy to come so we, we can be in the same room. But on like Zooms and like, just try to figure out, like, I'm happy to help participate in that technology. It, it can just be really difficult, that's all, and if there's a way we can make it a little bit easier, I'm happy to volunteer to, to do that.
That's a good idea, Mark. Thanks for that offer. Okay, yeah, let's do it that way. Okay, sound good? And, uh, should we do 6:30 next time? Is that what we're saying, or what are we saying about the time?
Virtual option, yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, what, Mark? I didn't hear, Mark?
Brian said yes, I said, if I'm gonna be in the office, like, I gotta eat dinner, so it's gotta be seven.
Okay. Alright, that's fine.
But, but we can leave, we can vote on that.
Yeah. Melissa, you okay with that? Uh, Ernie, you okay? Ernie seemed to want seven o'clock.
I know, I know. I'm gonna now on that. I just wanna get it done, but I, I, I live on a very different schedule than the rest of the world, so. I'll, I'll just be cranky.
Okay, alright, this is gonna be cranky if we meet at seven.
We don't want that. I don't want that, Melissa, sorry.
I mean, it's me being cranky versus all of you being cranky, so. You'll just learn to tolerate me.
It could be a good trade-off, like, might be a trade-off.
Never cranky.
Oh my goodness, alright, what are we gonna work on next time? Uh, let's, let's look at the work plan. Maybe we should do a screen share. Can you put a screen share up? Uh, who's got the controls there?
Rod is in command.
I can screen share, it'll take, it'll tell you.
Rod, if you wanna make me co-host, I can pull it up right now. I've already got it.
Oh, good. There you go. Thanks, Aaron. If not, there is that green button at the bottom of your screen. It's a shared screen, and that should, that should throw up the, um, work plan if you have it open, Rod.
You, you, Aaron, can you, can you, do you have it now?
Uh, yep.
Right.
Oh, good work.
Alright, let me just make sure I've got that particular. Pulled up on my screen here. Okay, let me do the screen share. Alright, should be able to see it now.
Great.
Great.
Okay. Alright, I think we just gotta move it down a little bit. There you go. Okay, go.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll be able to have, um, all of it, the screen at once.
No, we'll have to start at the beginning there, so maybe. No, we'll have to start at the beginning there, so maybe um we can see the dates, okay. Okay. So how do we want to think about this? Uh. The density study. We discussed it again at this meeting. Um, I think in terms of next steps. Well. Is there any benefit, I mean, people could go back and find it if they want it, but um to sending out again what was sent out in um it was either the March or, March and April timeframe, I believe, at least twice, we went over this in our um, in our planning commission meetings. So the people have the report. And then Rod, I know we're gonna have a final report of some kind, I mean final from a standpoint of, I guess, the consultants done with their work and now we have to do our work, but um what would be meaningful here as a next step?
Yeah, Jackie, or Rod, is there, is there any chance we might get something more to look at by the next, by the next meeting?
I would, yeah, I mean, taking on board the feedback that we received tonight, you know, I'll give some thought to how to frame the information, but I um, couple, couple of points. Um. Thinking more about how to put the format of any kind of preliminary report, and I would describe it as the consultants reporting out on the work they've done, not producing kind of a final report, right, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a summary of their work, not, not, not fine, you know, not, not 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 a draft document for the planning commission to agree to so much as a a bunch of information that um records the work that they've done and the insights that they've gained from doing the work, right?
Yeah, that's great.
Um, and so, um, and, but, you know, I think that the, on some level, like, kinda compelling work that they do is, is dynamic in the sense that it's a series of um in, you know, kinda interlocking GIS maps, so, and then, and then it needs to be spoken to on some level. So if we can, if we can generate PDF versions of those maps and then have some kind of narrative that goes with it, then that's great, that's what I'll aim for. If we can get that out before the next meeting, then I'll also aim for that, that would also be very good. But I, I can't, I can't, so at this point, without talking to them first, say what that's gonna be.
Okay. That sounds good, right? Everybody like that? Okay. Good.
Any answer, yep.
Alright, wastewater study, um, I think next steps for the people that we've recruited. Any other thoughts there?
No, I think once it happens, we'll have an update, right?
Yep.
I'd leave it on as an agenda point, I, I think it.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Um. And in terms of the um we have the general section and the admin section of the land use regulation rewrite that we have spent quite a few meetings and discussing, reviewing, commenting on, et cetera. Um, then the next step, I think this draft will be coming out of the density study for one.
Right.
Rod and Aaron, does that match your understanding?
Yeah, I would, yes.
Mm-hmm, okay, so what we really need to focus on then is the density study, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, the density study and the wastewater study for that matter. Okay, um, good. In terms of the um, uh, if you wanna just move it down a little bit, um, Aaron? The trails and the past master plan. I know we had written to the select board. We drafted a scoping document for a committee that would develop this, we asked the select board for leadership. We know they haven't replied. Um, we know they are go- undergoing changes, they have asked all of the committees for their priorities so that they could um sort that through. So it seems that we are on hold for that one. Until we hear something from the select board, is there any other action that we could take in that regard?
My recommendation, just because, you know, I'm uncomfortably straddling this fence, um, is to just wait a little while and see what the um select board will come up with. I think that their general picture is trying to figure out, um you know, their bandwidth to, you know, to, to move things along and then also staff support for, you know, any kind of additional um multi, multi-commission slash committee kinda activity like this, this would be
Yeah.
You know, in light about the discussion that we had earlier this evening about OML and so forth, there'd be a lot of um staff resources bound up in this kind of thing and um we've not, we've not yet agreed on a path forward. Uh, you will remember maybe that um when it was mooted, um, there was an allocation made in the budget to uh develop a um, an RFQ or RFP process to identify a consultant team to um, look at the Beaver Meadow neighborhood again, I'm, I'm trying to use my words as carefully as possible. Um, but, you know, um, building on the work that had been previously done by DuBois and King.
Yeah.
Um, but not necessarily be confined to the framework that that report produced. So I, I, I think that there's um decisions embedded there for the select board and for staff that will um take a little bit of time, not uh.
Yeah, that was also voted on in March, because it was, that money was approved by voters, you know, to do that study. And I guess, like, does that mean the study should be done this year since it was voted on this year?
Um, well, you, you always, you always like to do that, is what I'd say, um.
Right.
That, that's okay, um, what I'd say is um
It seems like we're running out of time to do that.
If, if it doesn't, it can, it can be carried over, I mean, that allocation can be carried over, so. It's just sort of a recommitment, a recommitment process in the budget, in, in terms of the budget.
Ideally, we would, we would be responsive and start that ideally.
Yep, yep, at least get the ball rolling, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Aaron, you, can you just move it down the um chart on the screen, I can um.
I've got it scrolled all the way down on my screen.
You do, alright, for some reason, it's not on mine, I don't know why, okay. Alright, well, I can't, I can only, my first, the last line is trails and master path, ma- master plan.
Okay.
I know there's something under there.
Aaron, can you shrink it, can you shrink your image?
Yeah.
I can zoom out.
There we go, that's better, thank you, that's perfect, okay. Um, Aaron, you wanna talk about the community rating system?
Uh.
Remember this, guys, remember we worked on this, uh, I don't know, it was before COVID, right? This was to reduce our um liability for flood damage. Now, we could get secure additional monies from the state if we complete this process. We were uh waiting to hear from FEMA for a long time, and uh, Aaron, you wanna talk about?
Yes, uh, most, really what I have to say is that um as you can see on here, I've committed to starting the process in November. Uh, I will say that the manual is over 700 pages long. So um patience.
Mm-hmm.
Patience is the watchword, but uh, yeah, that's, that's my plan.
You wanna characterize community rating system for everybody, so we all uh have an understanding of what it is?
Yeah, so there are different, I think there's 10 different tiers
Mm-hmm.
that a community can be in when they're in the National Flood Insurance Program. I believe Norwich is a, is level 10 right now. Am I correct, Rod? Yes, okay, so we're at 10 right now, which doesn't get us any, uh, doesn't get people any what's the word I'm looking for, reduction in their premiums. And there are different things you need to do to get points in the system to move up on that ranking, to start getting uh benefit, the main benefit is the reduction in flood insurance premiums for the town. Those are other things as well.
So wait, is, so high number is good or low number is good? You said a system of one to 10 and we are 10?
We are 10, so one is the absolute best.
One is best, so low is good, okay.
Yes, yeah, so, so, so we're on, we're on 10, which is like below.
We just got in the ballpark, yeah, we got in the ballpark.
Nine, nine is, nine is effectively the first step in the community, in the so-called community rating system, and so whereas one, I don't believe there's a community in the country that is one, I think there are a bu- a bunch that are two. A bunch of the two level communities were in Florida until the last storm, and then maybe they're not there so much anymore, so um the level of participation and involvement in the program generally reflects, if you like, the scale of the, the risk. And so a really elaborate commitment, a deep commitment might include um, working with members of the community to explore relocation, right? And then the municipality developing a fund to assist people relocating out of a prone area to a less prone area.
Right.
Or other engineering approaches like building a um, a seawall or something similar to that.
Yeah, the idea is mitigating our exposure to flood damage, basically.
Right.
What steps are we taking to mitigate damage?
Right, without wanting to sound overly cynical about it. The benefit of nine, level nine, is it qualifies us for a reduction in the contribution that the town would have to make in the instance of a storm that qualifies for a presidential declaration, so I believe it's still a million dollars, if there's a, if there's a storm in Windsor County where the estimated damage exceeds a million dollars. The process for the federal government follows is that they, what they, they do what they call a presidential declaration, which is to acknowledge that the damage is in excess of a million dollars. When that happens, money then flows from the federal government to the state government, um, and then can also end up um, and so that, that, that funding offsets the cost of repairs caused by the, caused by the storm event.
Mm-hmm. Currently, doesn't it go from 17% to 12%?
Yes.
Town's contribution.
Currently, we're, currently we're at 17% and the, and the town's contribution towards the cost of the damage is 17%. If we were a member, if we're a level nine member of CRS, it would reduce to 12%. So it's a 5% reduction in our contribution to the cost of repairs. In the, in the, in the recognition that, you know, a reasonable storm like the one that we had in July a couple of years ago was several million dollars. A 5% reduction is a significant savings for the town. So that's.
We all wanna do this, we all wanna do this, we definitely.
That's what we're aiming for.
Yeah, we wanna do this.
Much more than nine, and then for a town the size of Norwich, you're really beginning to then look at staffing commitments and those kinds of things. So that you end up having to spend a lot more money on staffing and resources to get from nine to eight, and then so then the trade off becomes a little different.
Mm-hmm, right.
So nine, nine, nine gets us that 5% reduction, which is what we're really searching for.
Great, okay. Alright, so we'll uh hear an update on that at our November meeting, sound right?
Yep.
Um.
Good, um, Aaron's memorizing the, the manual right now.
Yeah, what are the key steps or what does it look like? How big is the elephant? How big is the elephant, alright?
Yeah, all, all 700 pages.
Yeah, the question is how big is the elephant in terms of what we have to do, alright?
Yep.
Okay, alright, anything else we didn't talk about that we should have? Any public comments?
Jack, Jackie, just quickly, I'm happy to, I'm happy next time to give an update from the historic preservation.
Oh, yeah, that's great, okay.
As, as well as anything that comes out of that listening for the.
Yeah, and the affordable housing, okay. Okay. That's great.
Um. And I would just um just encourage anyone else, like, to the, to the point that came up earlier, that the agenda is sketched out now. But if, if anyone has other thoughts or things they think of, you know, tomorrow morning. Um, reach out, make suggestions.
Yeah.
Um, we can, we can always add topics, so.
Right, okay, good, good. Alright, uh, on that note, we have a, a motion to adjourn. Ernie, was that a hand? No, Melissa, Ernie, you want a second? Mark is seconding, already beat you.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of adjourning, raise your hand, looks like
Hi from.
It's a yes for Brian, we're unanimous, okay. Alright, thank you all, I appreciate it, have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
See ya.